It is 6:00 PM. Good evening, everyone. I am Mayor Yamicah Robinson and I am calling this regular city council meeting on Thursday, November 7, 2024, to order. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of our city of Lake City, South Carolina. I will ask for everyone to please make sure that your phone is silent or turned off at this moment. Thank you. The invocation will be led by Councilwoman Scott and our pledge will be led by Councilman Brown tonight. Please stand if you may.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you there, God, for this day. We thank you there, God, for this season. We pray to Heavenly Father that you will give us grace and mercy. Continue, Lord, to bless this city. Bless everyone that here to this evening. Bless everyone that intend to come, the one that listen on the air. We pray to Heavenly Father that you give us an open heart and an open mind, that we will come together with good solution for the betterment of this area, for the betterment of this city. We pray to Heavenly Father, you're blessed right now in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Bless every elected official. Bless the president. Bless everyone. Bless us, Lord, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
We're religious to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilwoman Scott, for the invocation. Thank you, Councilman Brown, for the pledge. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the city council members?
Yes.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem, we poll Singletary.
Present.
Councilmember Wilhelmina Scott.
Present.
Councilmember William Askins.
Present.
Councilmember DeWanna Cooper. Councilmember Sandra Fleming Crosby.
Present.
And Councilmember Jason Brown.
Oh.
Councilmember Dewanna Cooper.
Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you. Mayor Robinson, I'm going to leave.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Robinson, before the meeting, I have a matter of urgent business to present to the city council before the minutes are read.
Okay.
In the last election for mayor, approximately 400 people voted. We have here petitions for over 130 people who are asking and petitioning that the members of the city, members of the city of Lake City council members rescind ordinance number 2024.008, said ordinance reducing the function of the mayor of Lake City to a part-time position. We believe this is not in the best interest of our community. A couple of reasons for making this presentation and requesting this motion be made. We are making a motion and these are people who are seconding that motion.
Okay.
One.
Point of order.
The effect of rescinding the ordinance-
I'm allowing him to speak.
May I?
Go ahead. Continue.
The effect of rescinding this ordinance would be restoring the pay and benefits of both mayor and council members that established in 2022. Lake City in this council has received a black eye from this ordinance. It was based on bad information. The press reported that Mayor Anderson had only been full-time because he had a part-time city administrator and that the position revert to part-time when he had a full-time city administrator. This is completely false. He was a full-time mayor. He had a full-time administrator. In addition, he had a deputy city administrator. There was no stipulation found in the ordinances or the council minutes returning his position to part-time. The salary of the mayor and the council members was set, the salary for the mayor was set $40,000 by ordinance 2001.6.425 in June of 2016. The salary was confirmed by ordinance 2022.016 in October of 2022 and signed by the current Mayor Pro Tem Singletary. The citizens voted in November of 2022 with the understanding the position was paid at $40,000. The budget was approved with this position at that salary in 2023 and again in June 2024. In addition, no one has offered an explanation for this cut in pay. Ordinance 2024.008 could be construed as being a clash of personalities and is evidently being considered as such by the number of signatures on this petition, which is well over 130 members out of the 400 who voted for this position. I would point out that Mayor Robinson is not the only one who will suffer from this action. The citizens of Lake City will have less claim on the office of mayor for his concerns as the mayor will have every right to limit her time and attention to the issues as a part-time office holder. The second, the city's council members' reputation as competent city managers will be diminished. This is not good governance. We ask that you redeem Lake City's reputation for good governance by rescinding this ordinance. I have this petition to present to these petitions, to present to the city.
Just for sake of clarity, a motion has to be made by council. If, if there is an interest in any motion being made, the council makes a motion to rescind or reconsider. Y'all don't make a motion or second.
We understand. We are simply expressing our displeasure with the action taken by the city council and our expectation that it will be rescinded.
Point of order.
Charlie, anybody did the reconsider?
Point of order. It's in order. No, it's not. Charlie.
I think the, ask your question again.
Can any council member do a motion to reconsider? Is that open to anybody?
So, a motion to reconsider can be made by, only by a person who voted in favor of the past motion. So y'all-
Excuse me, but Robert's Rules of Order says that's not right. Robert's Rules of Order states that all for a motion to rescind-
That's a motion, a motion to rescind is different than a motion to reconsider.
Yes.
A motion to reconsider can be made by, can only be made by a person that voted for the prior motion. So those four that voted for 008, you would have to make a motion to reconsider. A motion to rescind, which is different, under Robert's Rules, can be made by any person at any time. And it has certain rules relating to how it may or may not pass. But to be clear, a motion to reconsider is different than a motion to rescind. A motion to reconsider must be made by a person that voted in favor of what is being reconsidered.
Yes.
A motion to rescind can be made by any person at any time.
Correct. Yes.
So by hearing the public tonight, and I thank you, Ms. Jamie Daniels, and everyone who stands with him in here tonight, by council listening to the public, the constituents, the voters, the residents of the city of Lake City, I'm asking, is there a motion to reconsider at this moment?
Is there a motion?
Reconsider. Reconsider. Is there a motion to reconsider at this time? Okay. Thank you. That's fine. That's fine. Thank you. I got it. I got it.
I guess-
Not seeing one, I would move forward with the approval of the minutes, please.
Thank you.
Simply say, we requested a motion to rescind.
Point of order. Ms. Crosby, we're gonna-
Ms. Crosby, okay, yes.
We're gonna stay respectful.
That's, she can raise a port of order at this point.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
And proceed to the approval of the minutes.
So it's already been said. Thank you.
Now I need a motion to adopt the agenda as printed with the removal of the presentation from the trees for a South Carolina presentation, please.
Move to approve.
Second. It has been properly moved in second. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Let's, all, all in favor, show of hands for our proven agenda. Good. Okay.
It's like pop-up burgers.
Clerk, do you find? Okay. Okay. Now I need a motion to approval of minutes, approval of the minutes from the mayor and council meeting, October 8, 2024, and the minutes from the special counsel hearing meeting on October 21, 2024. Move to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved in second. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands. We do not have any young people here tonight to address mayor and council. The presentations from Trees for South Carolina will be at a later date. Next, we'll have the public comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person and no personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during the public comment Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Please make sure to sign in and leave your name and address for the record for the city with the city clerk to council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Robinson and council members. I'm Batty Francis Stone and I'm here to ask a question that still remains. Why? There are a lot of citizens, as you found out from Jamie, but there are more, many more than that that we've heard from, that continue to be upset and mad with the vote at the last meeting to make a mayor part-time. The citizens of Lake City need answers to questions which have been directly asked of council members who voted for a part-time mayor and for which we have had no response. In some cases, counselors have not even had the common decency to respond directly to their constituents who have reached out questioning why. I'm asking that during your remarks at the end of this council meeting, for you to tell not only the citizens why, but tell the mayor and other counselors who specifically asked you at the last council meeting, during that meeting, what your reasoning was. Please be respectful. Do not turn away. That is very, that is-
Are you referring to me?
I am.
I was moving because my bag is-
We're gonna stay, Ms.-
No, no, she said something to me first.
Right, but we're gonna stay respectful.
You are out of order, ma'am.
No, we're gonna stay respectful, please.
You're out of order. No, she needs to be respectful.
Okay. Continue on.
Don't say that it was budget in your remarks because we know the money is there. Don't say that it's because she hasn't done a good job because her list of accomplishments speak for themselves. The mayor is committed to making Lake City a thriving community by developing smart risk strategies and pursuing grants to finance and growth. You owe it to the community to be transparent and not withhold this information. I'm here with my time and I look forward to hearing your remarks.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Paul Morris. And as I stand here tonight, and you know that, I just want to talk about unity. I just want to tell you guys tonight a little bit about me being a businesswoman in this Lake, in Lake City. In 2001, 2002, my daughter left me a business year in Lake City. She stopped her business and gave it to me. And we had the Lake City Development Corporation at that time. And I couldn't get along from the bank, so I went to the corporation to get it. I had a professional person to do it with my business plan. But every time I submitted to them, they said, well, something was wrong with it. Every time I submitted, they said something was wrong with it. And finally, somebody that was on the board that I respected, and he respected me, he told me, he said, Polly, those boards are not gonna give you that money. I tell them to give it to you, they're not gonna give it to you. Another incident is that a church hurt where I had to close my after-school program down from the church that I was at and I was in the street. Gloria Tisdale was on this, on this council, and they gave the armory to the council, to Lake City. Gloria came to me and she had talked to the mayor and city council about me and my children housing there. And they said verbally that it could happen. Sent us over there, our children, me and my children, cleaned up the room and everything. I gave some, some extensive exercise, exercises to the armory, they probably still in there now. When Gloria told me I needed to be at the city council meeting, they was gonna approve me with my children that was on the street to go there. And that night, when I sat here in this audience, and at that time, one of the council members said that, we're not gonna go forth with this at this time. Gloria sat there with tears in her eyes. My thing is this right here. Let's stop hurting one another. I'm gonna ask you this, and I'm, my time is gonna get out, so I know it's supposed to be a piece, but I'm gonna say this. If you go to your job tomorrow and your administrative staff say that your budget is cut in half, your salary is cut in half, and you already the budget for this, how would you feel? How would you feel if you got a budget? How would you feel? The only thing that I'm saying is this time for us to stop doing it to one another. And if we, and if y'all would tell us why are you doing it, we won't come back for you. If y'all can't give us a valid reason, the budget has been approved for the 24, 25 year, I could see if you ever waited until the end, whether she be mayor or not, or who the other man is coming, I could see you revisiting it and say, well, we're gonna look at this at the end of the term. I could see that, and then you would have made this decision. We could understand that. But you made this decision now. You took it from 40 to 27. Imagine if you go to your job tomorrow and, and you find that city that you, HR city that you, where is our heart at tonight? Where is our heart at? How can we do that to one another? How can we do it?
Thank you.
Well, go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
Get that. Oh, good evening. My name is Rochelle Jones and I'm here also for the concerns of having our mayor go part-time. I am one that pretty much my whole working career, I worked for either the state or the federal government. I worked for the state probably 20 plus years. I worked for federal government 16 years. And I've always dealt with budgets, millions of dollars of budgets. And what I could not understand is that I went back and I read your minutes in July and your budget was approved for the salary that was in there. Now, they came back and they asked for a raise and it was up to you for, you know, for the board to not accept the raise. But you prove, you changed the audience after you approved the budget. You changed the audience to make, make her part-time and guess what? And that was fine. But why did you cut her salary? She could have been part-time and 40,000 and working 40,000. That's fine. But the question that we as citizens want to know, you cut her down to 25, $27,000, what you gonna do with the money? Because then that budget, that budget was approved for her salary. Now you changed the audience of her being part-time. And then you went back and you made her salary $27,000 where your budget was already approved. So what are you gonna do with the money? That's, that's my question. What are you gonna do with the money? Because you have thousands of dollars that's supposed to be to the mayor's salary that's just sitting there. Now, we are citizens that vote. And if we ask questions, I think we deserve the answers that, the questions that we ask. Now, and I have been here, well, I have looked, I look online all the time and I see the body language and I see no questions are being answered. So I, me, myself, personally, I will be here at every meeting. I will be here at every meeting answering, asking the same questions over and over again. If I have to reach out to someone that's a higher power than Little Lake City Board to see if what was done is within the law because the, because the budget was already approved, I will do that. As I tell my kids, you're gonna get sick of me because I promise you, I'm gonna be here every Tuesday and I'm gonna ask the same questions and see if I get those answers. Because you gotta remember, you didn't put yourself in those, in those seats that you're in, the voters did. And we are the voters. And if we ask a question because we are the citizens here of Lake City, they should be answered.
Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. And my name is Tim McFadden, but I always do, you wonder who I am. Here I am. 23 years Vietnam federal. Live here in Lake City on three dead-end city blocks. It's time for us to change. The change need to be in the leadership. Okay? Department heads. I went to three different department head, asked a question which I never received an answer. The only answer I received from the department head was, that's above my pay grade. But where is your pay grade? For shell jump. You work for us. So it's time for us as Lake City to keep the outsiders out and we sell our own property. And the only way we gonna do that is by replacing department head and city official. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council, citizens of Lake City. I consider myself a citizen of Lake City. This is my home. I live in Columbia, but I came here because there's a concern. And I always do when it's not even a concern. A motion to rescind is what citizens are asking. Please do the right thing. If that is too much, if you lose sleep over a motion to rescind, please consider a reconsideration of that motion. If you can see our city is crying out. We have concerned citizens here. Many towns have citizens who could care less about what's going on in their town. This is a good thing. You have a vibrant city. We have a vibrant city because people are concerned. When you have citizens who are not concerned, you have a major problem. Where there are not concerned citizens, there is no city. You have a mayor here that's vibrant. She's all over the place. She works 24 hours a day, seven days a week. If she does not answer a phone call or respond, that is a problem. So do her calls flow over to other staff in the city? I have no idea. We have placed our mayor in a poverty level bracket, what people have been trying for decades to get out of. And what I hear is that we've never had a part, we've always had a part-time mayor. I'm quite sure if the citizens knew they were voting for a part-time mayor, they probably wouldn't even come to the ballot to vote. And she is doing an outstanding job here. We are proud of her. Many of you go to your jobs tomorrow, you don't get there and your salary is cut in half. You don't ask for a pay raise and they turn around and decrease your salary. Kids are in the home. The citizens of Lake City need this. So please, please reconsider or rescind that motion to have a full-time mayor, not unless we plan to turn our city off at about 12 or 1 o'clock. And what is the why? Your response to the citizens who voted for you and your response to the citizens who voted for the mayor and the council. And it's not all I want to say, but my time is up.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments for public comment period? If none, we're gonna move on with our agenda. Before Mr. Hall come up at this moment, since we've heard a lot of comments here tonight and we want to take everything in consideration, what's been said, and these are our citizens, these are our constituents, these are our voters, these are who, the people who go to the ballot box and put us in office to do our job and to represent them to the fullest. So at this moment, before Mr. Hall come up and go any further, I'm asking for a motion to rescind the ordinance 2024.008 that was passed last month to place the position of mayor of the city of Lake City at a part-time position in the salary rate of 27,500.
I'd like to put forth, put forth the motion to rescind ordinance 2024.008 for recension. That'd be right, Charlie.
I second it.
It has been properly moved in second.
Is that late?
It's moved in-
It's moved and seconded.
I'm asking the city of Cleveland, is that late?
He's, he's answered.
It's moved and seconded, and that can call a vote. And you will have to have a four under Robert's rules. You'd have to have four positive votes in favor of the motion to then have it rescinded.
That was a motion of reconsider. This is a motion to rescind.
Just again, for everyone, a motion to reconsider is different than a motion to rescind. A motion to rescind can be made at any time by any person versus a motion to reconsider. That is a, a different motion that can only be made by the people who voted in favor of what was being reconsidered. So there's a motion and a second, and now there could be discussion.
So just for clarification, we can make this motion, which it's been seconded as well already. If this motion is passed, that means that the mayor position goes back to originally what it was before, full-time and at the forty thousand dollar salary. If it's not passed, then it stands at the part-time position and at 27,500.
Correct.
Any other questions or concerns, council? If none, all in favor for the motion to rescind ordinance 2024.008.
Point of order. Point of order.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're gonna go ahead and continue. All in favor? Show of hands, please. Any opposed? We're gonna move forward. Mr. Hall? There was a statement that was made before Mr. Hall continues. There was a statement that was made to say that the council members will have a moment during the reports. So hopefully, that answer why will be, that question why will be answered. Mr. Hall?
Good evening, mayor and council. For your consideration, I present to you ordinance number 2024.010. First reading. An ordinance of the city of Lake City, South Carolina, authorized into city to transfer and sell a property of private developer for the purpose of providing workforce housing and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve, a motion to approve ordinance 2024.10 for first reading?
Motion to approve.
Seconded. It has been properly moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to table this until, uh, because this is first reading. Council has not had any information or any input on these, uh, houses. Don't know who the private developers are, don't know what type of, um, transfer it would be, or the price of homes. And it says workforce housing, and it says five houses. In addition, when you look at the schematics of the houses, they, um, I wonder who decided on the design of the houses?
One Day Developers LLC is the same house as they build in Darlington, South Carolina.
Okay, and that, well, we still have houses here in Lake City, two on the end of Carver Street, one, three, one has been sold, two have not been sold.
Three have been sold.
They're all sold.
All three have been sold.
The other two are working through the mortgage company. Matter of fact, the, the ones on Carver Street have been sold probably about six or seven times.
Okay, well, one, one very corner of Carver, and that one is occupied. And I said the other two haven't been sold because they're not occupied.
But they, they're at the mortgage companies.
Okay, then the other two down Wall Street are still under construction.
Under construction.
So I don't see at this moment, I, I, the intent is very good. I accept that and I respect that. But until we can get clarification, council, until we can get more information, front-end information on these houses, the developer have contact with them, I'd like to make a motion to table this until maybe.
We have One Day Developers in the house, if you wish to talk with them.
We do have the information that was supplied to you in the packet. Plus, we do have the gentleman here taking, clarify any question that you may have.
The information that's supplied in, in the packet shows the schematics of the house, the pictures of the house. But any negotiations before that, council has not been privileged to that.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Not at this point.
Not necessarily.
Yeah.
Not necessarily.
Yeah. We were told that we could bring it, just bring it in and present it, bring the developers in, let y'all meet them.
Um, this, this is housing development. And this is something that the city of Lake City needs. So at this moment, you're saying that you want to table housing development?
Until council is, is able to get more information and talk with these developers.
Well, we have them here tonight, then we can make that happen tonight.
The motion is on the floor.
The most, technically, the motion is on the floor and can be seconded or not.
Already seconded. It was seconded.
It was seconded.
It was seconded.
Uh huh. I did. There was a motion to table, and it was, it was seconded. All in favor, show of hands.
To table, right?
To table. All in favor to table, show of hands. One more time, all in favor to table, show of hands. Any opposed? Yeah, but it's.
We alleviate from different processes.
The last time we came to council was when you were meeting the Wedgefield developers, and that's a, that's a Dolemore Foundation. And the main reason they came to council, that we could offer them concessions in water and sewer taps. That we could submit to the South Carolina Housing Authority for grant funds that they could apply to build these, uh, units on the Wedgefield mobile home park.
Okay, so when y'all set out a, a special meeting about these houses, and then y'all canceled the meeting, and now we bringing it forth now. That's what we.
We need to get more clarification, so that's why it was canceled. We need to get more clarification on when we met with the developers, which that happened, so now it's coming back now. And if you need any more information, he's welcome to come up and give you that, provide that information to you. But, but we do have, Charlie, is it okay, but we do, we were in the middle of voting.
It's tabled.
We. No, it has not yet.
Only three votes to table.
She made the motion, but.
I made the motion to proceed with this one, and then she wanted to table it.
Oh, you made the motion to proceed?
Yes, on the first motion, on the first.
She made the second. Okay. Okay, so clarification.
It was only a three vote, three voted to table.
But we didn't have a second to table? You didn't second to table?
No, I didn't second to table.
So there was no second to table?
Okay, so the motion is off the table.
Right. So the motion is dead to table. For every, for all clarification for everyone. But now we'll have presentation.
Y'all got me lost now. Y'all saying early it was tabled.
It was not tabled because it was not seconded.
It wasn't seconded.
She didn't second to table.
She did second to the table.
She seconded the first motion.
About that, I thought they said she seconded.
I mean, I'm, I'm, it's not my words, it's.
I didn't say it was your words.
My name's Adam Martin. I'm a little confused too, but I'm, I'm here, I'll be glad to answer any questions you got.
We're trying to get more information, there'll be clarification where everybody know what's going on, that's what we're trying to do.
Please, please. Thank you, thank you.
Cannot make an informed decision unless we have information.
You cannot make a formal decision to let you know what's going on. No, no, no point of harm intended against you. But in order for us to make a formal decision, we need to know what's going on, instead of coming back at the end and then getting it now.
Hundred percent understand, I'll be glad to answer your question.
And I can, I, I agree. And the time to, if you want more information, you always welcome to come and get that information. You have been invited to come to the office to receive that information, but you do not come to receive it. But then it's brought up at the meetings. Go ahead, proceed.
Good evening, how are y'all doing? My name's Adam Martin. I'm with One Day Developers. It's an entity that myself and these two gentlemen are a part of. And Harry Cook is the residential builder, he's got contractor's license. We have built houses, developed houses that we consider workforce housing. And we have done in the past a lot of single lot development. And we have the opportunity and want to expand into Lake City because of what the city's done, and we see opportunity in the city to, to bring some housing and a need for housing. We put together a presentation. Do they see the presentation?
They do have, they do have the information in their packet.
Alright, so I'm assuming y'all have seen the presentation, you understand what the layout is and what we're wanting to do. One thing I just do want to clarify is this is, this, as far as the funding for these homes, this is all out of our, our investment. This is not investment out of the city, this is, this is purely investment on, on our behalf. Uh, we're not asking for any investment funds to go towards the housing at all. So with that, if there's any questions I can answer, please feel free to ask.
So these houses are actually, this is just for information for the actual citizens, so, um, they're gonna be running around a hundred and seventy thousand?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
They gonna make three bedroom?
Three bedroom, two full bath, yes, sir.
Back there, um, that's back of Lake Street?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, um, how many square feet?
Twelve hundred and fifty.
And a hundred and seventy thousand?
Yeah.
A hundred and seventy thousand, you said?
Yes, ma'am, a hundred and seventy thousand.
Okay, it looks like, um, was it siding on the outside?
Yes, ma'am, yeah. Bino, board, and batten siding on fronts, horizontal.
And all of them are identical? Five cookie cutter identical houses?
They're all identical.
Okay. At that price, for affordable housing, you know, that's, um, for affordable housing that I think.
The, these houses, they, they're gonna have LVP flooring, granite countertops. I mean, these houses are finished very nicely. We put a lot into these houses, the margins on these houses are, are really very bare minimum. And we don't have much room on these houses at all. If you, I mean, and I can, I can actually provide some data to you about what it'll take as far as a household income to afford a hundred and seventy thousand dollar house. Is that something I can give to the council I got?
Yeah.
That's fine.
So it'll be based off their income? Y'all got y'all own private realtor that y'all go through to sell the houses, or how do y'all do that?
Can you repeat that, I'm sorry?
I say, uh, it'll be based off of their income, and do y'all got a private realtor that y'all get to sell the houses, or people come talk to y'all, or?
We, we would hire a realtor to, to market the houses, list them on the MLS and handle the, the sale of the house, yes, sir.
Okay.
As far as the, we don't do any financing now, that's, that would be all through separate mortgage company, just like any other home buying purchase. Is the goal behind that. What you're looking at here is, um, this is a, just, just to kind of give you example of where the payment would be at on, on a hundred and seventy thousand dollar house. You see a screenshot here from Yahoo Finance of the average, uh, interest rates right now. So that, that first, e- each of those three boxes is, is an example of, of an interest rate. So the first interest rate is, is 5.91 for 30 years at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That would be with zero down payment. And the reason I have that is these lots are in USDA territory. So they have the opportunity to have zero dollar down payment if they, if they apply for that. But that, at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars at a 5.9% interest rate, their monthly payment would be a thousand dollars, a thousand and nine dollars a month. At 6% interest, for, this is for a 30-year mortgage, your a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, the monthly payment would be a thousand nineteen dollars. At 7% for a hundred and seventy, the, the monthly payment goes to eleven thirty-one. As far as the next page, what you'll see, I put together some numbers just so y'all have something to, to kind of have a, an idea on. But a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, what it takes to afford as far as a household income, what it takes to afford a hundred and seventy thousand dollar house. So that first calculation there you see is, this is with a zero dollar down payment, because again, they're in USDA area. If you have a hundred and seventy thousand dollar loan, it will take you a household income of forty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars of an annual household income to be able to, to afford that mortgage. The second, the one below that, I have, if you put a 3% interest rate down, or a 3% down payment down would be fifty-one hundred dollars. And that would get you down to a household income of forty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. The la, the latest information I have, um, according to Data USA, is thirty-seven thousand dollars to thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand dollars is y'all's median income, household income in Lake City. So we are a bit above that, but in my opinion, we're, it's, it's worth our investment. We, we think it'll be a good opportunity to provide housing in a, in a needed community. And the last picture you see here is just a, a copy of the map showing that that property is within USDA eligibility.
Now, if this were to pass, um, is it possible to do any modifications to the facade? Give it a more architectural?
Well, when you.
More curb appeal and, because it's just, she's just, looking at these, they're cute, but they don't really stand out.
I understand. Well, our, our whole goal is to hit a certain price point. And if we continue to, to increase siding and, and things like that, there might be a few minor things that could be done, but overall, that's just gonna drive the price of the house up. And, and our goal is to make them as affordable as possible at that 170 mark.
My next question is, y'all be buying the property from the city, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
How much did we pay for that property? And what we looking at selling the property now?
Council member, we paid a, uh, twenty-one thousand dollars for that property. And basically, we're gonna give it in kind, because in the roundabout way, we will have five houses sitting there. We'll increase our tax value base by eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and we will be bringing in approximately seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty cent in taxes and revenue from water, sewer, and garbage. So in the, in three years, we would have recouped the money. And then that property won't be sitting empty.
You know, not knowing what the, um, when you look at, you're basing this on like a 5.91%, 6% and 7%. With the market, we don't have any guarantee or any way of knowing what the projected interest rates will be.
But you did say that they are USDA approved?
Yes, ma'am, they're in the USDA approved area.
Okay, so these are will not change, these interest rates will not change?
The interest rate is, the, the down payment is what has to do with USDA. So if you're in a USDA area, you can, you can apply as long as you meet their recommendations. I'm not a mortgage lender, so I don't know all their recommendations. But if you, if you meet their recommendations and their requirements, you can get a zero dollar down pay to purchase that house.
Yeah.
It just depends on the purchase, who's gonna purchase the house? If they're gonna go through a mortgage, a mortgage company or the USDA
That's correct. And that, and I mean, just as a reminder, we're, we're putting our capital on the line. I mean, this is our investment. I mean, we, we want to provide housing, and we see a need in this area, and that's, that would be our goal. But I certainly understand the, the concern about selling the properties.
Yeah, selling the property.
That weighs heavily on us, you know? We think it's a good opportunity to move the city forward and, and provide a need that y'all need.
Well, thank you for thinking of Lake City. Because, um, housing is needed. And of course, like you said, that you guys are kind of like sticking your neck out there to try to make it better for, uh, the citizens, so. But to go back to us wanting stuff. But to go back to us wanting stuff, going back to how stuff is like usually done and things like that, when things like this, as far as housing comes about, it's, we're just used to it being, well, since I've been on council, being private and then we'll, you know, bring it to the public. So that's what, kind of today, that, that was the mix up. But I understand what you're bringing forth and making a, um, important presentation.
I do wanna say, he's been in conversation with Mr. Luke Gobbo, who is our economic co- um, development coordinator, who works for the city of Lake City. And this is his role to go out and make sure that we have these companies come in and look at Lake City for these developments, Mr. Gobbo.
Good evening, council. Part of my role, uh, when I stepped into this role, I was told, you know, we, we have a, a need for residential development, along with commercial development, along with industrial development, along with small business development. They all feed into one another, um, and One Day Developers, um, wants to be in Lake City, which is huge. You know, this, this may sound simple, but sometimes if you scratch someone's back, they'll, they'll scratch yours. And you know, we're trying to s- sell this property in kind by essentially giving it to them, but we've run the numbers. Within two to three years, we will have a complete return on our investment of giving them this property. And then we, we will continue to benefit property tax wise for the years, um, after that. So it's, it's an investment, uh, financially, um, it's an investment for the community, because the, the odds are, we could have five, you know, families come to Lake City, invest in, um, our local business, uh, send their children to our schools. So I mean, you can't really go wrong on a deal like this. I, I just, it's been a pleasure working with One Day Developers, um, they've been very professional throughout this process. And I, I really hope you will, um, consider this, this deal, and, uh, I hope that it will be passed, um, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gobbo. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now, um, the motion to table was not passed. So now we go back to the motion to approve ordinance two zero two four point zero one zero for first reading. So move again.
So second it again.
So it has been properly moved in second. Any other questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you for the presentation too.
Kind of clarified.
Mayor and Council, for your consideration, resolution twenty twenty-four point oh four six. City of Lake City is seeking the approval to accept grant funds from the South Carolina Department of Public Safety for the Lake City Police Department in the amount of thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-four cent, and all matters related thereto. This is two grants, body worn camera at seven thousand, two twenty-nine eighty-six, in car video cameras at twenty-eight thousand, five ninety-four oh eight. And I will state that there is no city match to these funds.
Need a motion to approve resolution two zero two four point zero four six for final reading?
Motion to approve?
Second.
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 It been, it was properly moved in second. All in favor, show of hands.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Mayor and Council, for your consideration, resolution twenty twenty-four point oh four seven, final reading. A resolution from Mayor and Council to agree to a memorandum of understanding between Florence County Environmental Services and the City of Lake City for code enforcement and animal control and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve resolution two zero two four point zero four seven for final reading?
Move to approve.
Second it.
It has been properly moved in second. Any questions, council?
Yeah, chief, uh, could you explain what, what y'all planning on doing? Y'all gonna be working with the Florence County Environmental, or y'all gonna be doing it yourself, or how y'all gonna be, going about doing that?
If I will, in, in, in between on that, we are taking a code enforcement role and converting it to a code enforcement, animal control. And we're going to place that person under the police department. So now we have a bite in the tickets that will be issued to the people that are breaking our code enforcement rules. At that point, this will be a code, a class three advanced person. They have the authority to issue tickets and come to court and enforce the fines.
Okay.
If you wanna add anything?
Yeah, so basically, that's exactly what it is. So basically, that's exactly what it is, is this a class three police officer that can enforce municipal code violations and stuff like that. Typically, you get a, a letter in the mail, and we've got thirty days to abate whatever the problem is and anything after that. That officer can then come and charge you. They can write you a monetary fine where you have to appear in, in city court and, you know, either pay the fine, plead guilty to it and fix the issue, or it continues, that fine continues to travel. As, it'll travel to the next court date, to the next court date. So it gives the, um, it gives that individual a little bit more tools in the toolbox to, to take care of code violations and ordinance violations within, within the city. And to split that role and make it a dual role, Lake City to my knowledge, has never had their own animal control officer. We've got an abundance of animal issues within the city, but we rely on Florence County Environmental Services to primarily tackle that problem. It's not to say that they're inept or incapable of doing it, I just think that we're better suited in handling it, because we see the issue every day. And we've got a person that's selected to, to fill that role, and that individual has already started some training. So what this memorandum of understanding does is it allows the Lake City officer to utilize the, the shelter, the animal shelter.
So we gonna have a shelter here for animal?
We won't have to pay for that, the county will do it for us.
Yeah, it allows us to take animals, it has to be seized, and we have to take somebody's animals from them, whether it be from an abuse case or neglect case, or just whatever the case. It allows us to utilize their facility and now we can take them versus waiting on environmental to come down and, and trap them or take them or whatever needs to happen. We can do it ourselves while using their facility.
So there's not gonna be a financial impact?
Not to us, because this role is already in place, we're just gonna change the philosophy of it and change the job description and create a, a advanced three officer.
So essentially, we're doing more with what we have. It's taking the staff that we have and giving them more duties. And this, where normally this class three officer is, they're restricted to this building, we can go outside and make that part of their day to day duties to, they report then to a class one if it requires a complex investigation. But just the, the first initial call, that individual will handle on a Monday through Friday, eight thirty to five.
And we've, uh, filtered the job description and the memorandum of understanding through the county, the law, the, uh, lawyers, uh, on both sides to make sure that we were within guidelines of state and regulations, to make sure we haven't overlooked anything.
Do we have any information on the number of calls from Lake City?
We did, the, the numbers that I pulled went from, I think they ended in February, we did about six months that ended in February. We responded to, I think it was sixty-two animal complaints in Lake City during that time period. And Florence County ended up responding to and handling six of them. We handled them with alimony. So there's a need for it, and that, those numbers, they, they show the need clear today.
Yes, that's seen within the community.
And it's, it's for nuisance animals, it's for wildlife, domesticated animals that have become a nuisance animals, the pack of dogs that you see running around town. This individual will be equipped to, to handle that. And if they need assistance, we still call environmental control. Or if environmental control needs assistance, we'll go to them. So it's, it's a mutual aid type thing as well. So it, it works both ways.
Thank you, chief.
Any other questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Mayor and Council, for your consideration. Resolution number twenty twenty-four point oh four eight, final reading. A resolution by the City of Lake City for the approval of an order, order relating to the business license, abate right, and all matters related thereto. This goes back to the, uh, hearing we had two weeks ago.
Need a motion to approve resolution two zero two four point zero four eight for final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It has been properly moved in second, any questions, council? No questions, no discussion? All in favor, show of hands? Any opposed?
Mayor and Council, for your consideration, I wish to present with you with your monthly financial report. For October, uh, the general fund, uh, revenue in the amount of one million three, expenses in the amount of three million one. Overspent the revenue by one million, seven ninety-nine. I will remind you that we collect all our taxes in the rear, so we actually have not recorded taxes in the general fund as of yet, from state or from the county. Water fund, we had revenue of five forty-three, expenses of four forty-one, and excess of one oh two. In the sewer fund, we have revenue of nine fifty-five, expenses of nine thirty-four, and excess of twenty thousand six. On the stormwater, we collected fifty-four thousand seven, we had some expenses of sixteen thousand seven, we have a, uh, excess of thirty-eight six, thirty-eight thousand one. In the reserve account, we have a year to date of ninety-three thousand, three hundred and twenty, and the water reserves and it.
Is that ninety-eight, you said ninety-three?
Which one, yeah, ninety-eight, I'm sorry, ninety-eight thousand, three twenty, and the year to date reserve for the water, and the year to date reserve for the sewer, we have ninety-six, one eighty. Mayor and Council, for your consideration, approval of the bills for November's one through four.
Need a motion to approve bills, items one through four for November seventh, twenty twenty-four?
Motion to approve.
Second it.
It has been properly moved in second, any questions, council? No questions, all in favor, show of hands? Any opposed?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Mayor and Council, um, Chief Miles would give you a brief report, but since we changed the night's meeting from, uh, earlier, uh, it's gonna be brief, because the system doesn't allow him to change the dates on these reports. Chief?
Yeah, if we start messing with that metric on that, it'll just be in the first Thursday and not the second Tuesday. There's a chance we run into skewing the numbers on that, that's the last thing we wanna do, is give inaccurate information. So you'll get that as soon as we, we print it out, I'll make sure it gets emailed to each of you. And for the public, we can post that on our Facebook pages or something like that, if you guys see them, you know, remain transparent. We have filled the youth intervention position with an individual by the name of Dwayne Skinner. He has started, he is working, he's being housed at LC two seventy-eight Allen Cole Road. He's already making some progress, he's met with SROs, some school officials. I think he's met with Mr. Stormy over at the Boys and Girls Club, so he, he's hit the ground running, he's already started. We've also hired Officer Edie.
I'm sorry for interrupting you, but Mrs. Skinner is here tonight.
Is he, where is he?
Like to stand.
Oh, there he is, he was hiding behind me, there he is.
Would you like to stand, Mrs. Skinner? Thank you.
He was hiding behind. But, uh, and we've got Officer Arnold L. Edie, who comes to us certified from Timminsville, so he started, he's working tonight as well. And we're moving forward with interview processes to fill the last remaining few vacant positions that we have, which will be a total of three, now that we're moving one individual into this class three position for the animal control and code enforcement. So we're working on filling those as well, and we look to have those filled with individuals out of the academy, hopefully by the first of the year, if that's possible. We've got one in the academy now, all accounts, he's doing well, they test every Friday, and he's made it so far, so we've got high hopes there. And we're, we're moving forward with, like I said, filling the positions and, and running the calls. But when I looked into the computer system to see if we could get you a report, the numbers are running typical, so there's nothing abnormal. The only abnormal thing is, would be, October was a pretty busy, busy month for the entire city, you know, as well as the police department. But we, we had, um, the alumni event, the homecoming event. All those events increased call volume for us, it increases call volume for us, because we're proactive, we're out there. The closer we get to filling that roster, you're gonna see the call volume raise, because the officers are out there working. Where before, it was easy to keep a low call volume, which made things appear that there was nothing really going on in Lake City. Well, it was going on definitely, every day and every night, it's just we didn't have the officers to deal with it, we're now we do. So you're gonna see an increase, that's expected. So that's not anything out of the ordinary, if you look at them in their totality. That is Corporal Beadlin, Isaiah Beadlin, he's working tonight, this is the night shift that's working tonight. And that's Andrew Pullen, standing behind me.
Thank you.
Both of them relatively new officers, Corporal Beadlin's been here a little while. Andrew Pullen, he hadn't been long, got out of the academy, what, maybe a month or two out of the academy?
Alright.
So you're fully staffed?
Not yet, we still got, it's a total of three positions now. We also have a lieutenant over patrol that'll be starting this month.
He had two that didn't make it to the academy, so we had to start over.
They, they don't get a chance to go back if they don't make it to the academy?
The way the academy works, if you get two failures, you're out for a calendar year, you can't go back for a calendar.
Okay, so they don't fail two times?
The ones that's, that we had to separate from, they failed twice.
Okay.
Typically, you fail one time, they'll, they'll give you one chance to recycle. And if you fail a second time, then you're out for a calendar year, so they resign from their position. They're welcome to reapply after that calendar year is up, if we have an open position. After, after two chances, you don't, you don't get a third, not within a calendar year.
Well, the city has also paid, uh, uh, very diligently to give them their training in-house before we sent them to Columbia. So they were already making a salary, and they made a salary going to Columbia, and we cycled them twice. And if we wanted to keep them a year, then basically, they would just be clerical work at the price of a police officer.
Yeah. They, uh, the way it works is they do an in-house training, it's called pre-academy. They do pre-academy here. And then they go to Columbia to the academy when they're registering, they take a physical agility test, and then they have to, have to take a cumulative test. If they pass that cumulative test, which all of them have, means that we've done our job with the pre-academy. And then if they fail after that, that's, you know, they're failing the academy standards at that point. So it's, they call the shots on that one, we can call and beg them to send them back all we want, it doesn't help. They, they stick by that, and that's statewide, that's for every department, we all go to the same academy. So all class one officers go to the same police academy, all class three officers go to the same police academy. So theoretically speaking, any of these officers here, and myself, we could work for Lake City, we could work for SLED, we could work for Highway Patrol, we could work for DMR, certification is the same across the board.
How long is the training?
Ma'am?
How long is the training?
Eight weeks, it's four weeks in-house and eight weeks in Columbia.
May I post a workforce chamber?
I'm sorry?
May I post a workforce chamber of active labor at the library, having people go in there and kind of sort of support, like bring them forward?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, I'll get with you after this.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you, chief. Mayor and Council, that's all we have for you this evening, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Next, we will end this meeting with councilman, mayor and councilmember reports. And we will start with councilmember Askins.
Well, first I'd like to introduce my sister-in-law back there, she just won District Five seat. Interesting first meeting to come to. Uh, just to let you know, this is a chill one. Well, the holidays coming up, I hope everybody's safe, and as for tonight, everybody coming out, I'm glad y'all came out and expressed your opinions. I wholeheartedly agree with all y'all, I think it's been a big mistake, us taking our merril position to part-time at a lower salary. There's no good reason for it, it's not gonna help the city move forward, and it's gonna damage us for at least the next two years. I hope that's the only timeframe that we have, and we, we take it back in two years. But, um, but I heard all y'all, and I'm glad everybody came out.
Thank you.
I would echo to what, um, we were saying, and, um, thank you, Sister Lo, for coming aboard, you be my neighbor. But anyhow, um, I express deeply concern about the mayor, um, just her salary change. I, I see her here, and I've been places with her, and, um, And I truly respect what you do and what you have done. And I'm disappointed because we went through the budget, and we approved that money. And, you know, to take it away, to me, is wrong. I disagree with it. And I was down seeing public. I disagree with it. There's no reason, my knowledge. I have no reason. And I haven't seen any reason. I haven't seen anything in the paper for any bad things. Wherever she goes, I've been getting called for the last couple of weeks from all over the PD area asking me why, asking me why. I had no answer for it because maybe I'm lost. Maybe something they know I don't know. But what I know is all good. So again, thank y'all. Let's keep us in prayer, but I still believe in prayer. You know, I can accept what's going on all over the world. I can accept what's going on in Lake City. But I know there's got to be a change. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you all for coming out and addressing your concerns. I spoke with the mayor yesterday, after a month without even having any contact with her. But she did reach out. She asked me the same question that you guys asked, why? I explained to her my why. And my thing is, I mean, we never had a full-time mayor, of course. We only had Levin Anderson. Right now, I just feel like we really don't need a full-time mayor. Let me talk. And my issue is... Thank you, Mama. Yeah, so please be mindful. Like I said, I already addressed my issue with the mayor. I already know if I sit here and address my issue with you guys, or my reason, it's going to go back and forth. So anybody who got anything to ask me, I can address it after this meeting. Like I said, I already addressed my issue with the mayor. She already know why I made that decision. And like I said, I mean, it was, it was after a month without any type of interaction with her. And she definitely asked me to change my vote tonight. And, I mean, me having a voice, I mean, nobody shouldn't have to tell me to change my vote because I made my choice that day. So I'm going to just keep it like that.
She gave a reason. She gave a reason.
I did.
Yes, she did.
And you can address me after the meeting.
I did owe Councilman Mayor Protem's sentiments and correction when Mayor Anderson was mayor. He was mayor part-time. And my understanding is when he became full-time, he retired. Then he came back, and we didn't have a city administrator. So he asked for to be full-time during that time. And since he was, when he left full-time, the position would have gone back to part, would have gone back to part-time. But the mayor asked for that, and we said two years, up to two years. And I said, I have nothing else to say. And I will thank you all for your comments. And enjoy your holidays.
Good evening. I would like to also thank everyone for coming out tonight to express, to express your opinions about what's going on in Lake City. My why. My why is because I took in consideration my constituents in District Four. Yeah, yeah, I did. Whenever I look at the taxes being raised, whenever I look at the water bill being raised, anybody from the outside looking in, well, let's back up then. Someone asking for twenty-five thousand dollars on top of forty thousand dollars from the outside looking in, that's what the people may say. Well, did my taxes go up to pay twenty-five thousand dollars? That could be the answer. Not saying everyone, but some people. And what I did was I looked at the socioeconomic demographics of District Four, which mainly consists of a lot of elderly people. Now, yes, I worked, and I worked a few jobs. And I probably could, and not even probably, I can take care of my mortgage. I can take care of the taxes. I can take care of my water bill. So I took that in consideration, just because I'm able to do it where my neighbors be able to do it. So that's why I said no to the twenty-five K. It may not be what you guys may have wanted for her, but I'm just thinking about my constituents and the people, the socioeconomic demographics of Lake City as a whole. The people that don't have a income coming in like that every two weeks. The people that are going to get a raise, yeah, in January, but then you're going to have to turn around and pay insurance because you're sixty-five and older. So I'm taking all of that into consideration. This ain't about me. This is about these people in Lake City. And that's what I took into consideration. Like I said, you may like it and you may not, but I did what I thought was right for the people that voted me in. Now, going, moving forward, I want to wish everyone a happy Veterans Day because I'm a veteran. And I care about veterans. I also care about you guys. And if you cannot hear it in my voice and see it in the expression on my face, that something is wrong. And I'm going to continue to fight for the people in my community, and I'm going to be, continue to be a voice for the voices, a voice for the people who are not here tonight. And that's why, that's what I was put here to do, and that's what I'm going to continue to do. If you guys have any questions or concerns, my name is Dewanica Cola Cooper. I represent District Four. And I will continue to represent District Four for the next four years. Thank y'all. Have a good night.
Let me, let me talk. I want to thank everyone for coming out. I stand with Councilman Cooper on what she said. The reason why, clear your throat, reason why I did not vote for her to get a twenty-five thousand dollar raises because... Hush, hush, hush. Let us talk.
We're going to respect. We're not going to tell anyone to hush. Yes, but we're not going to say hush. We're all adults in here, and everybody want to be heard.
So whenever I talk, it's okay for them to talk over me?
No, sir. No, sir. No one told you hush, though. I don't think you're anybody's father in here.
Nobody's father, but nobody's not going to come here and rock and roll over me.
Go ahead and continue.
Because out of the hundred votes that probably did not vote for me, get that cleared, cleared, okay?
I don't know. I didn't.
All right. So, back to what I said. The reason why I didn't vote for her to get the twenty-five thousand dollar raise and stay full-time is because we got a city administrator right there. Before, the reason why, because she would be doing two roles as the mayor and running the city day-to-day operations that she doesn't do. That's why we pay him a hundred and three thou, a hundred and three dollars a year, whatever we pay him. Hundred and three, right wing? Hundred and six. That's what we pay him a year. We don't pay her to do the day-to-day operations of the city. Yes, she's the face of the city. We completely understand that. But you're not going to go anywhere else and be a full-time, part-time, making forty thousand dollars a year. I worked a full-time job nine. I don't even make over forty thousand dollars a year. And I worked three jobs. After taxes, I don't even make over forty thousand dollars a year. So what I'm saying is, nothing disrespectful to her. Like I say, whenever Mayor Anderson was here, he was part-time. He parked his vehicle outside of that building every day. He came up here, ride or roll with you. You worked him, ride or roll. All right. He parked his vehicle. He drove his personal vehicle up here, picked the truck up, did the day-day operations. He parked that vehicle back out there at front. Whenever we was going through the hard time before we got the woman, Sean Bell, before we got Sean Bell, and now you, correct? He was full-time. He was full-time then, but y'all was supposed to go back and review it, ride or roll. Y'all was supposed to go back. Yeah, two years. Now, with his cabinet, with his cabinet, if his cabinet felt the need of keeping him full-time, yeah, they felt the need as keeping him full-time. But right now, we just raised taxes here in the city. We just raised the water rates here in the city. Y'all don't get the cause that they get, oh, why the water bill so high? Oh, why the taxes so high? I have to take into consideration, yeah, it might be a hundred signatures on here. Yeah, it might be five other hundred people that live in my district that don't agree with her getting the twenty-five thousand dollar raise. So I have to take into consideration everybody else. And I have to think of the demographics of the people that's living in the neighborhood now, that might can't afford to be paying higher taxes, paying higher water bills, because later on down the road, something else going to come up. And what I want, William, to tell me, is we're in the budget that we said that we was going to give mayor and council a raise. I want to see it for myself, because I done look. I want to see it where it say, mayor and council. What was said, that we got room to give raises within the departments. That's what he said. Quote-unquote, that's what he said. I got a good memory. And I'm not arguing with no one, because everybody got their own opinions, and everybody got their own ideas. Nothing to discredit her. She do a fine job. She do's a fine job. But we got a full-time administrator, and she could be a part-time mayor and make twenty-seven thousand dollars a year, and go out there and make, get another job, make it thirty thousand dollars a year, and survive just like the rest of us, surviving, most people that surviving at home right now. No, your tax, no, your tax is not going to go up. The money's going to go back into the general fund, correct, William?
Okay.
Okay. So it will, it will be no problem with the money, like you say, Ms. Rochelle. You want to know where the money was going. And I've given you that clarification. The money's going to go back into the general fund. Now, later on down the road, we got employees here might not make over forty thousand dollars a year. Now, we might to give them the opportunity to make over forty thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
You get what I'm saying?
Rochelle. Rochelle. Rochelle.
We're saying the forty thousand that was agreed in the budget for her salary, you cut her salary when the money is still there.
Okay.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying, what I'm saying, Ms. Rochelle.
Councilman Brown, do you mind wrapping it up so we can?
I got, I'm a grown man. I could talk. What I'm saying is, whenever she make forty thousand dollars as a full-time mayor, listen, when she make forty thousand dollars as a full-time mayor, and now she's part-time, who in their right mind go pay somebody forty thousand dollars to be a part-time, a part-time employee? You, who go, who go, who going to pay it? You going to pay somebody coming to your, your job and, and work part-time and pay them forty thousand dollars a year?
Okay.
Okay. Well, I can't do that because I got to be steward of the citizens and of their money. And I don't think it's right for us to be able to do that.
Okay. Are we done? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers, for your reports. I thank everyone for coming out tonight and viewing on Facebook. First, I want to take the time to congratulate our re-elected and new councilmembers after election. Councilwoman Sandra Crosby for District Two. Congratulations on your reelection. Councilmember Dewanica Cola Cooper, District Four, the district that I live in. Congratulations on your reelection. And our new member, Melissa Askins for District Five. Congratulations. I want to thank, I want to, I want to thank the Lake City High Alumni Association for a great weekend, homecoming weekend. I was the grand marshal for that homecoming parade alone with Ms. Barbara Bryant, who is a trustee on the school board. We definitely had a busy weekend, and our police department can attest to that. But it was still a good weekend, and I appreciate the Alumni Association. Announcements of upcoming events. Tomorrow, we'll have our Veterans Day program here at a veterans park right behind the city hall at ten a.m. We have, we will have a few speakers and light refreshments, so please come out to honor our veterans for Veterans Day. November eleventh, the city administration office will be closed for Veterans Day on that day. Next week, please pray for our safe travels. There will be a few, Lake City staff members will be attending the National League Conference in Tampa, Florida. We are part of the NLC one hundred Centennial Roadshow Celebration. So that is a huge thing for our city to be a part of, just one, one of the one hundred cities and towns in the entire nation to be chosen to be part of this roadshow and celebration in Tampa. We will be highlighted next week in Tampa. Along with your mayor, was invited to be on a panel by the National League of Cities to talk about strategies for small towns receiving grants. So I'm very honored to be asked by the National League of Cities to be on that panel. One second. Novem, excuse me. Mr. Councilman Brown.
Whenever I put my elections sign, I had to get my elections sign out of his trash can.
Councilman Brown. Councilman Brown. Excuse me, one second. November eighteenth, will we, will we have our community forum, which will have updates from the local, which will be myself, Mayor Robinson, from state, which will be... Local, from your, from myself, Mayor Robinson, from county, County Councilman Jason Springs, from state, House Representative Roger Kirby, Senator, Senator Ronnie Sav, and Sheriff T. DeJoy. That will be at the continuum November eighteenth for updates for this year. So please come out, hear our updates from a local, county, and state perspective. And if you have questions, that'll be a time for us to ask all your representatives any questions that you may have. Francis Marion Kelly Center for Economic Development did come out to speak with us today, and we have their card and some information. If you want to do a small business, start a small business or run in a small business, they have great information for you to help you on your journey with your small business. We do have these cards available. The Lake City Recreation Department is starting a flag football league. Registration is running from November fourth to November twenty-second. The season will begin on December third. So make sure that it's for girls and boys, and they will be starting that league. DCB will be starting their Me Forever Thirty-Day Gratitude Challenge. There will be more information on that. I can get you a copy or email it to you, but that's DCB Dramatic Coffee Beans, which is under the instruction of Ms. Carla Angus. My last few remarks that I have for tonight is that I appreciate everyone for coming out here tonight. We are a city in a time where we are growing. We are trying our best to shine. We are doing everything that we can to be a leader in this nation. There are so many people that are looking at the city of Lake City because we are doing a lot. I can understand that there was part-time mayors prior to me, but this is a change these days. It's 2024. Yes, I have much respect for the mayors before. We have a former mayor in here tonight, Mayor Leroux Alford. But at a time when Mayor Anderson came full-time, yes, he did have the city administrators at that time. He went through three, to my knowledge. Three. And when his last year that he was in office, from that March, to my knowledge, when I was councilwoman, he wasn't in office due to respect because his health started declining. But his pay did not decrease at that time. It say, we decided to keep it as is, up to forty thousand dollars. And to bring me down to twenty-seven five, your mayor wouldn't even be able to have one of the new houses that they building. But I was elected by the citizens of Lake City, the majority of the citizens of Lake City, in 2022 election. And they have every right to have a full-time mayor, and I've been doing the job, and I'm gonna continue to do the job. It may be tough and rough on me, but I am gonna keep my family at the top, but I am gonna continue, because this is my hometown. We've had so many people to come through Lake City, from, all the way from DC, a number of times in just the two years I've been mayor, and it's not about I, because everything that's happened is a team effort, but who gets the big win? You all, the citizens, the council. You get the big win, because it's a team effort. We work together. And I know this is a lot of disconnection tonight. And I pray, along with we getting a new councilmember coming in in January, that we will be able to work better together, because people like One Day Developer, they see the disconnection. They could pull out tonight, and we won't have that housing development. Others can look at this Facebook Live tonight and say, we don't wanna work with the city of Lake City because of their leadership. We have to think about that. We have to get off our feelings, because it was in the budget. Actually, the $25,000 was in the budget, and that information was provided to you ever since March. So it was, if you actually read the information and ask questions if you need clarification. But when that budget was passed, that... No, yes, at that point, but then also for the councilmembers, for their crease as well. But the $25,000 is not going to increase water rates. It's not gonna increase taxes. I would never, ever do anything to make anything detrimental to anybody in this city, and this is my hometown, where I was raised and born. I would never put anything on hardship on the citizens of Lake City. Never. But now the hardship is on me. And I appreciate everyone. For the past couple of months, I've had so many people to contact me, from within Lake City, outside of Lake City, Columbia, DC, they were appalled about what happened to me. And it's not just about to me, but to the city of Lake City. We are moving strong. And to bring down your mayor, your CEO of the city. I don't punch a clock. It's to my discretion, to how many, how many hours I'm gonna be here, but most of the time, you can ask my staff, am I in that office? Or if I'm not in the office, I'm at a school, I'm at a church, I'm with a family, I'm in, with the organization, it doesn't matter if they're black or white. Am I wrong? I am there for everyone, because that's why I represent the city of Lake City. That's how I do it. And I'm gonna continue to do it. And I wish that we would start to have more, better respect for each other. I'm at home with eight, with my children, everybody up here, no disrespect whatsoever, but I'm the only one raising a family up here, and I get cut down that way. The only one, plus a caregiver to my mother. And my dad. Thank you. I love this city, and I'm gonna do everything that I can. I don't care how many knives get stuck in my back.
Ain't no need to throw slang, because nobody do nothing to you.
I'm not throwing slang. I'm just, you, you let it be known.
Facebook, I done heard every Bible verse. I done ha, I know, I know who Jesus is, and I know who God is. I done heard, I done heard every last one of them.
And I'm gonna continue to tell everybody who God is. Everybody. And I hope you continue to read my Bible, the Bible scriptures.
I didn't say you. I didn't say you. I just say I heard every Bible verse and every scripture from your supporters to...
I know it's late.
Everybody who's upset for what happened to you, but nobody's done nothing to you intentionally, and you taking it personally. You very taking it personally.
Okay. Okay. I'm saying is, election, election just passed, all I'm gonna say is, an election just passed. And another one is coming.
Well, you can go ahead and run for my seat, because you live in my district. Yeah. You go, seriously, do, do everyone...
I need a motion to adjourn. I need a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Thank you.